Rule call for the city council meeting Wednesday, March 20th, 2013. Mr. Winarski, Mr. Brennan is absent tonight, out of town on business. Mr. Evans, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Witherspoon. All please rise for a moment of silent meditation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
This evening, we ask that we remember all those in our community that are less fortunate than we are in any and every way, those that have lost loved ones since the last time we were in these chambers. We also ask our God and Creator to give us wisdom to make the best decisions to help and improve the life of the citizens of the city of Erie.
Tonight, we have the Boy Scouts from Our Lady of Peace and a couple of Boy Scouts from St. George is here tonight to lead us in the National Anthem or the Pledge of Allegiance.
How's that?
They're going to sing.
Unless you guys know how to sing, but please come on up, introduce yourself and...
Come on up on stage.
Sure.
Hi, my name's Josh Roomba, and I'm the leader of Boy Scout Patrol, the Stealthy Ninjas, at Our Lady of Peace, Troop 59. We have five boys here, and also from Troop 96, from St. George, we have two boys here. We are here because we work on the citizenship and the Community Merit Badge, and to earn that, we will have to attend a town meeting, so we're here to learn about it and know how it runs. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Excellent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you for coming. This is the pledge today. Good job, boys. Keep us to good work. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thanks for coming. Yeah, thanks. Good to see you. Good to see you. Yeah, congratulations for coming. Yeah, good to see you. Okay, yeah, thank you for coming.
That's a special group.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the bills for payment on March 22nd and March 29th. Mr. Evans, Mr. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. Okay, Mr. Mersky, I believe?
Sure.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call up Marshall Blount. Marshall, please step forward. Marshall is a young man in our community, and he truly cares about the city of Erie. He created a webpage called Erieite Pride, and it presents all the good things about the city of Erie. And one of the things that Marshall does is he walks around the city and takes pictures of historic places, businesses, and he puts them on his Facebook page and tells a story about each business and each historical site, citing all the good things that are going on in the community. We're very proud of you, Marshall. Mr. Witherspoon, if you'd like to come down too, because we were at an event with Marshall, and we decided that you deserve this recognition. So, in recognition for your Facebook page, Erieite Pride, which presents good things in the city of Erie that we have to offer in a positive way, we congratulate you with this certificate of recognition. And at this time, I'd like to call up the Merciarest Men's Rowing Team. On behalf of City Council, we'd like to recognize the Merciarest Men's Rowing Team for the phenomenal work that they have done, shattering two Guinness World Records on March 7th and 8th, 2013, by rowing 4,501,000, need my glasses, 879 meters, or approximately 280 miles, establishing a record for the greatest distance rowed by a lightweight men's small team on an indoor Concept 2 rowing machine in a 24-hour period. And they set a second world record at the same time for having 600 individuals row 500 meters on a single ERG, which included Merciarest students, faculty, staff, and members of the Erie community, including me. And let me tell you something, that is not an easy thing to do, and I commend you for 24 hours' worth of rowing. That is a lot of work. What's great about this accomplishment is these are the first world records in the city of Erie. Thank you for that. And the money raised went not just to help the Merciarest Rowing Team, which would be well-deserved, but they also donated money to Project Kenya Fund and the John C. Kansas Cancer Research Foundation. So, we're very proud of you on your accomplishments. Therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Erie, that this commendation is hereby presented to Coach Adrian Spraklin and all the participants in the 2013 Merciarest University Endurothon, and extend our best wishes and continued success to the university's men's and women's nationally-ranked rowing teams. Congratulations, Coach.
Thank you.
If I could just say, on behalf of Mayor-Senate, congratulations for all of your accomplishments and for everything that you did to inspire the community. While I wasn't rowing, I was watching it all unfold on the Internet, and it really was exciting just to see what was happening. And so, on behalf of Mayor-Senate, we'd like to say congratulations. Thank you for inspiring our community.
Thank you.
Congratulations. My daughter rode for West Point.
Did she really?
Yeah, yeah. So, I know the sport well.
You do?
Oh, I do, I do. She did, she really enjoyed it. She really enjoyed it. Yeah, thank you. Congratulations. Yeah, congratulations. Congratulations. It's a great sport. It's a great sport. Congratulations. Yeah, congratulations. Oh, you guys practice on the bay regularly? Yeah, I see people out there all the time. Yeah, congratulations.
Don't have tires now.
Good to see you. Congratulations. Congratulations. Good luck. Sure is great to see a lot of good youth in this town. Speaking of good youth, we have our first official junior councilman here tonight. His name is Mario Bruni. We're not going to let him speak till committee reports though, because he only has five minutes and I'm just teasing you, but grab that mic down there, and if you'd like to state your name and a few of your accomplishments, feel free.
Hi, my name is Mario Bruni. I am 11 years old. I am in the fifth grade at Our Lady of Mount Carmel School. I am a Cub Scout, altar server, and OLMC singer. This is my fourth year in EYSA soccer. My brother and my sister and my mom and dad are all in the second row, and I'd like to thank my Uncle Jim for mentioning this to me.
Good job, Mario. Do we have anybody here for a repository sale tonight? Anybody for a repository sale? I didn't think so. Okay, citizens to be heard? Citizens to be heard.
My name is Willie McAdory. I stay at 448 East 15th Street. I got a problem. You hire three more police, and you ain't got no more blacks. Do we got to go back 25 years ago and do the same thing we had to do before, before we can get into some respect in this community? Poverty in the black community is like 55%. Nobody cares about that, and we ain't seen the Marilyn time in eight years. Now, he going for his 12th year. Do we think that we don't live in this community? We can't even provide, basically, the basic needs that we need for our children. Let's not talk about trying to do what we got to do for ourselves, and no one's concerned about that. I don't understand what's going on. Somebody please tell me what's going on. Nothing happens positive from up here in the black community to say anything. What is going on in this city? And you always talk about, well, you need to do this, you need to do that. I got to eat too. Do any of y'all consider that up there, that we have to eat? And that's by any means necessary, y'all. I want y'all to keep that in mind, too. What's up with the police? How many black police do we have now? Mr. Spoon, I think you is lay us onto there?
Yes, sir.
How many black police do we have over there?
Not many.
How many do we have? I didn't hear shit.
Not many. I don't know, in numbers. I'm not going to guess three, four, five. I don't know.
Can I hold up five?
Yes, sir.
Or could I drop three and say we got two?
Possibly. I can find out for you.
I would appreciate it. Somebody need to do something about this. This is crazy. And then this cat is running unopposed. I don't believe that. How is that possible? He ain't did nothing. Only thing we get is a row on the shore. Community black grant money, cut five, what is it, 5% from what they got last year, 2.3 million? They already done spent that. Police got $500,000. For what? They got all the most modern equipment that they done got in the last 10 or 15 years, and it's just sitting over there. It ain't doing nothing. It ain't doing nothing, and they want more machines, more guns? You don't provide anything in the black community in terms of program trying to help some of them peoples out there that's struggling. And you tell me you get Booker T. Washington $9,000, and the money that you got from the state, you got that on the block of black folk? It's indigenous community is the person that they get that money from. And you want to know how I know that? I was director of Citizen Participation for the City of Erie. I know how that go. And they get less of the money when it comes in here than anybody. But when they get all that money, that's where they get it from, on the indigenous community. That's the main thing that they put in the contract to get that money. But when they get here, it's a whole different story. Why is that? I know y'all want to answer that, but it's a fact. Hey, ma'am, like, I don't understand. We got a problem out there. We got a serious problem. As soon as something jump off or pop, that it go again. No joke, that we go again. No joke. What do you expect? We talking about everybody getting...
Thank you, Mr. McAdory. Your time is up.
Ain't heard no clock.
It rang.
Ain't heard no clock.
It rang. You were talking when it rang, but it rang.
Give me a few more minutes.
I'm sorry, I can't. We have other citizens to be heard.
I understand that.
And the rule of council is five minutes, sir.
But you know, I know you get it later, a couple of weeks ago, 15 minutes on five minutes. Now, what's up with that?
No, it's the rule of council is five minutes.
That was the rule of council then, Mr. Winarski. That was the rule of council then, when you gave it at 15 minutes.
Five minutes. Your time is up. Thank you. Next citizen to be heard, please.
I'm going to let you have it.
Set an example, sir. Thank you.
I'm going to let you get away with that this time.
My name is McDonald. My property's 19th and Reed. I know what Mr. McAdory is talking about, but you know, you don't listen to us until violence start. Back in the 60s, hell broke loose. It's going to break loose again, believe me when I tell you. It's a good thing they trying to get them AK-47s off the street. People's bottom to kill people's weather. That's a shame. You know, the Bible speaks of vengeance is mine, says the Lord. Vengeance is mine. There's a lot of vengeance out there. I hope we don't have a hot summer. I hope so. But from where I see it's going to warm up a little bit. You don't want to do nothing for our kids. We love ours too. You might not see it, but we do. I see everybody gets something but us. I can go long with me not getting something, but the kids, you're going to regret what you're doing. I promise you that. Some of you can't see no farther than your nose, and you're doing good to see that far. But you're going to wish you'd taken a different avenue. They don't ask for much. Give them some of what's due them. I know they do some of that money you got coming in. You done bought them foreigners that church over there. That's tax dollars. Any money you get from the government is tax dollars, money that we or somebody like me done worked for. The government, the government is a big monster, and we got to feed it. We try to feed everybody. You can't satisfy nobody taking from somebody, giving it to somebody else, robbing Peter to pay Paul. And that's what, that's what, not just y'all, this is all over. I know you're not your own people, your own man, your own one. You have to listen to somebody. Joe up there, he's got to listen to somebody. He's not his boss. I know that. I'm not stupid. There's some stupid peoples out there, but I'm not one of them. I can see farther than my nose. I just hope that you're able to endure what's going to happen, because it's going to happen. It's going to happen. And you're going to ask why. Think about what you didn't do, what you should have done. It'd be too late then. It's going to be too late. It's going to hurt a lot of people. It's going to hurt a lot of people. The money come in, we get a few pennies. Some of these organizations, they're starting up. Look at that, look at that building up there on Parade Street, them new houses, garage and air-conditioned. Hell, I don't have that in my house, air-conditioned. I don't have a garage either. Had one, but it fell down a long time ago. But we should clean our own houses up before we start trying to do something for somebody. I bet you when they start putting peoples in those houses, you're going to have a bunch of foreigners up there. You're going to look like you're in another country when you go up through there. Didn't need all of that. Just, hey, just a house would have done, but you got air conditioning and a garage? You're going to buy them cars too. Some of them you're buying cars for. Y'all, we're not as stupid as you think we are. You're killing us all the time. I remember reading about the Indians. When the white man first come here, he couldn't have made it without the Indians. Now, the Indians is nonexistent, just about it. Every time they'd get a piece of land, they'd move them, move them. When they discovered gold there, silver there, they'd move them back some more. You know what? I don't care how many wrongs you think is right. They're not right. A wrong is a wrong. I don't care if it's a trillion wrong that don't make one right. You better think about that. Y'all think this old man don't know what he talking about, but I do. Believe me, I do.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
If you listen, you learn something.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Good evening. I have a little bit of laryngitis, but my name is Stephanie Arrington Lofton, and I reside at 422 West 2nd Street here in Erie, Pennsylvania. And I really didn't know how to or where to address my issue, but I briefly spoke into Councilman Jones. I want to say good evening to all of you, given honor where honor is due to you constituents here tonight. I, to the south of me, have a blighted home. I am a homeowner, and the address that I'm talking about or referring to is 419 West 2nd Street. There has been chronic issues with this property. Currently, there's pigeons that are home there. They're flying all over the neighborhood. There are some environmental concerns. I called the Health Department, and because there is a cut in funding, no one's able to service me. For years on end, I have reported these issues to the code enforcement officers that were servicing those sectors. Mrs. Carson, at one point in time, and currently, Mr. Lombardi, they have been awesome, but this property owner continuously neglects to take care of the property being mentioned here. Last week, I did also try to get in touch with Mr. Zimmerman, who I'm understanding is the director of code enforcement. I also called last week and spoke to District Justice Robey, and he is very familiar with this piece of property. And he said to me, you know, I understand what you're saying. This person is being cited over and over again. I could put him in jail, but that's not the resolution. I have a lot of concerns in regards to the devaluing of the property in the neighborhood, the environmental safety in regards to the property being filled with pigeons. Last, a couple of weeks ago, there was a pigeon that was plucked to death in my backyard by a hawk, and it was a horrid sight to see. I had to have someone come in and clean that up, because there was no one that I could get that actually does it, so I had to have somebody come in and clean it up. In this, on this property, it's been, like last summer, I spent lots of money fighting off rodents, skunks, raccoons, roaming and searching for food. I parked my car one time on the street. Going to get in my car, there were dead rodents in the grass. In the summertime, the grass to this property is up to your waist. Like I said, I've most recently spoke to Mr. Lombardi, and I know he's done everything that he could. I know that District Justice Mag, the magistrate, Robey has done, but it's like, it's a revolving door. I even spoke to the homeowner, because he's living across the street in his grandparents' house. I said, honey, I said, you know, God blessed you with that property, why won't you take care of it? He shrugged his shoulders, and he knows that I'm a Christian. He told me, you just pray for me, and walked away. Stuff siding is falling off the house. He won't, he won't even bend down to pick it up. I'm like, you've got to be kidding me. So, I said to District Justice Robey, I said, the parcel of property must have been given to him, because when you're given stuff like that, and you don't have to work for it, and you don't have any blood, sweat, and tears in it, then you don't value it the way you should. And so, like I said, I'm just here tonight because I'm concerned we're coming up on another summer, and this is an empty house that could possibly be filled with vagrants, a meth lab, gangs, young people are looking for someplace to flock. I'm just looking for some resolution. I did type out everything here. If I can give a copy to everybody, thank you so much for hearing my concern tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Lofton. Mr. Evans, who's ahead of the Erie Housing Authority, is also going to check into that on a personal note and follow up with us on council here.
Okay, thank you so much.
Mr. Winarski, can I just ask one question?
Certainly.
Ma'am, is that property, is there someone living in the property, or is it empty?
Well, it's been empty for a while. The person's grandmother lives next door, so he's been living in the house, but people are in and out, they're sleeping on the outside of it. And I have a nine-year-old grandson that lives with me, and I'm concerned about the children in the neighborhood. It's getting ready to get hot, and, you know, you can build a meth lab anywhere. You could do just about anything. I've worked for Office of Children and Youth. I currently am a mental health specialist with the Erie School District. I have great concern about our children in this neighborhood, but I have great concern about this house sitting over here that this guy won't do anything about, and everybody's done everything, but it's, no one has a resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll definitely check into it for you.
Mr. President, if I could, Ms. Shoff, will you be following up with code on this?
I will follow up with code, and I'll be in touch with you.
Blighted property.
It just seems that there's, if, a lot of times when we hear this, Ms. Lofton, it's because the homeowner is untraceable or unfindable, but the fact that you know who the homeowner is seems that there should be some ability to enforce on the person more, you know, some penalties or something to get him to comply, so...
It may even be on our blighted list, I don't know, so we need to...
We'll check that.
Okay, they'll be following up. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name's Ed Griffith. I'm with Neighborhood Watch, with Robbins Blast Neighborhood Watch. The area of our concern is from Elmwood to Washington Street, 32nd to 26th Street. I wanted to hand out a copy of my newsletter. Let him sit down first before...
Our watch has been an organization for two years. It's a great aspect of the community, and with that, we had a Pebble Park on Washington Avenue behind a Summer House Cafe that was just grass and one swing set, nothing to it. The old swimming pool area was in there, just filled in with dirt, and we took it upon ourselves to raise $2,000. No tax money, no nothing. Businesses getting involved, donation of $250, private donation of $1,000. So, last year, we did the existing planning areas on the corners of the two parks, on Pebble and on Washington, and then we did where the swimming pool was, we did the whole garden, the whole swimming pool. If I could just show you a copy of this, sir.
Good exercise tonight.
Hey, good exercise.
Thank you. We're going to have an Easter egg hunt this Saturday there. We've had a Halloween parade there at the park. We've had a Halloween parade there at the park. Coming this May, we're gonna rededicate the park, May 11th. I'm here to invite you all to the rededication ceremony. We're gonna have ice cream there from the Shwan's Man. Um, I think we're gonna get the city trailer. We're gonna have, the World of Music's gonna have the kids' school of rock, the younger kids of rock. May 11th, I would love to see you there, 2 to 4:30. We also might be getting some playground equipment there. If it does come to futration, I would like to, like to think that the council will help us, transport it, install us, and guide us along the way. I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mursky, just keep the blueprint there in my side. Any other citizens to be heard this evening? Antonio? Any other citizens to be heard? Hearing none. Mr. Clem?
Okay, we have a resolution by Ms. Iran Kunso, second by Mr. Mursky, receiving the communication from Ray Massing, Executive Director of the Parking Authority, submitting financial statements and reports for the year ending December 31, 2012. It's hereby received and placed on file in the Office of Accounts and Finance. Mr. Evans, Ms. Iran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. Resolution by Mr. Evans, seconded by Ms. Iran Kunso, that the proposed repository sale of property, commonly known as 920 West Seventeenth Street, identified by the Erie County Assessment Index as, uh, index 16, 230, by the Erie County Tax Claim Bureau, by Curtis Clem, Two Clerk Curtis Clemmons, 922 West Seventeenth Street, and the amount of $125 is hereby approved. Mr. Evans, Ms. Iran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. And three purchase orders. The first one is for Agen Business.
The balance of the agenda, Mr. President.
A second.
We'll call on the purchase orders. Mr. Evans, Ms. Iran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. All right. Kunso takes us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Ms. Kunso?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanna say a couple things, um, quick to report upon, but first, I wanna welcome you, Mar, to our meeting. You've been a very good junior councilman. You've been very nice and quiet and respectful, unlike some others, but we appreciate your comments today. You were very articulate, and you spoke very well, and you should be very proud of yourself, and we welcome you, um, to our meeting and your family here to our chambers. A couple things just to update the council on and the public about. One was the City of Erie Water Reserve Fund met. Uh, our investment committee meets quarterly to talk about the performance of our fund. These are funds set aside from a lease arrangement with the Erie Water Works and the city, and those funds, what we do is we try to gain earnings, investment earnings on those funds to use for capital improvements for the city. So we had a meeting to talk about the performance of the fund, and it continues to do well and has returned over 8.8% return in the last three years. So we continue to try to strive to bring some money into the city for capital budget items each year. Um, the other item that I've been working on is the Erie Franchise Agreement with Time Warner Cable. It's been an ongoing multi-municipal collaboration effort to try to negotiate a Time Warner contract for the city, use of the city's right-of-way. Um, that franchise agreement is hopefully going to be finalized shortly, and we were discussing, uh, the implications of that and how that might affect, um, things going forward, and we had the opportunity to meet with our CAT TV, Channel 2, to talk with them as well. So that's all I have to report, and I would like to thank all the young people that came today. We appreciate your interest and your sitting and listening to city issues and how city government works, and you're always welcome back. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mursky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things to report. St. Patrick's Day went very well in the city of Erie. There were not a lot of incidences, and, um, we're very pleased with the work of the Fire Department, I'm the fire liaison, and the Police Department, and how everyone was kinda just enjoyed the day and, um, enjoyed themselves. So that was great, and the parade was a lot of fun. Cold, but a lot of fun, and, uh, but we stayed warm, and, uh, it was, it was a good time was had by all. Secondly, I spoke with East High's English as a second language class and, um, about city government. They were learning about how cities are run, and so that was a really neat experience for me. East High has 25, about 25%, 24% of the student population are immigrants, most of them from Nepal. And, um, without, just looking at the latest census numbers that were released, um, just this past week, the city of Erie would be losing population without our immigrants coming into this city. They are the ones buoying our population, and so, um, it was really interesting to talk to them and explain to them how city government works, and, um, as they live here and become integrated into our community, um, we look forward to them becoming productive citizens as well. And, um, finally, just, um, the gentleman, Mr. Griffith, that came up, I did meet with him and the Robbins Blast Neighborhood Watch about their park renovations, and we're really excited, um, about the fact that they're stepping up with their Neighborhood Watch and taking ownership of their neighborhood park. When government works with neighbors and citizens, great things can happen, and that's just a fine example of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mursky. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very quickly, uh, I am liaison to Erie Water Works as well as EMTA. That meeting, the Water Authority meeting will be tomorrow, so I'll be attending that and be able to report out, uh, on that meeting and the things that are going on with that appointment, um, at our next session, uh, next month. And then EMTA meeting is, uh, next Monday, the 25th, and so I'll be able, again, to give more report on those two liaison assignments. Very quickly as well, uh, just kinda echo what Mr. Mursky said, uh, very quickly about the power of communities taking, taking control and managing, um, in neighborhoods and people in communities and neighborhoods managing their space. Something that we have increasingly had to deal with since the time I've been on council and even before that, is that generations before, there was a lot of money, a lot of federal money for new and upstart programs, um, community service-type programs, community enhancement-type programs, community, uh, building programs, summer work, uh, jobs. I was a kid, you know, always had a summer job growing up. Those programs are no longer in existence in our, well, around the country, but in particular here in our local community and this Commonwealth. A lot of the monies that were flowing have not only stopped up, but have dried up, and so we have to find new ways of, of, of meeting the same need, or actually higher-level needs with less government, if you wanna use that term, money. And I think a great example of doing that is what the group, uh, from the, uh, that talked about creating this park and generating their own money. Uh, it's something to be said for me investing into myself or into my community. That's makes it valuable. Uh, the young lady that was here, um, Ms. Lofton, mentioned that possibly the landlord or the owner of that property, maybe it was gifted to them, so they don't value it very much. And, uh, so if he didn't have to work for it, the value there, eh, yeah, whatever. Uh, I think it's the same principle. Any of us who works, if you work hard for your money, you're gonna value it. You work hard on your property, you're gonna value that. You take investment, and you put your blood, sweat, and tears into your neighborhood, your community, your family, you're gonna value it, and certain things are not gonna be allowed to happen on your watch. And so I think some of what we're looking for in the community is for government to do what historically has been able to do when money was flowing. Now it's not flowing, we as the community members have to shift our thinking and adjust and say, "How do I become, how do we become self-sufficient? How do we build our own park, our own neighborhood, our own jobs?" Classic, and I'll stop, 'cause I, I can get into this thing, and I don't want the egg beater to go off on me too soon. Um, just for example, in, in speaking on the African-American community in Erie, and that's okay, do that, 'cause I'm a part of it, and, well, you too. Fifty-seven, approximately, 57 African-American churches in the city of Erie. Round number, you know what, it's not round number, but about that number. Let's just say 50 for the sake of round numbers. Imagine if each of those churches, who are very much concerned about our community, concerned about our youth, raised, had a fundraiser, had, let's say, $1,000 apiece. That would be easy to do for most of our churches. Or let's just say, $1,000 apiece, that's $50,000 that could probably put, eh, 15, 20 kids to work for eight weeks in a summer. That's something that would be easy to do. As, we don't have money to do that. Count, we don't have that money. Uh, it's not only, uh, CDBG, when it gets cut, not only does do programs get cut, but CDBG funds, because of the way things are set up, it affects departments in the city. Those percentages go down, when those monies go down, percentages go for salaries also go down. So we're looking for finding ways to create money to keep our operations running as well. It's not like the city, CDBG funds get cut and only programs get cut. A lot of things are affected, and it's been getting cut drastically every year, just as an example. And so we're talking about creating, and we're talking about doing, uh, for self. I think that is really the message that we need to begin to portray and to project, I should say, um, to every portion of our community, and we have great examples of that. I just don't think we do that enough. And so what I don't have, what we as council don't have is general, a bunch of money to give, but we can support ideas, we can connect people to places that do have money, we can support valuable things and great assets to the community, and I think we see that we do that as much as we can. Um, but again, I guess my major point is that there has to be a point where we take ownership, and we do for self. Anyone who, hey, you get laid off, what do you do? You create yourself, recreate yourself. You start a business, or you go to back to school. It's the same thing. Communities used to getting X amount of money, it doesn't happen anymore. We can either complain about it, or we can shift our thinking and do something about it, and, and it always has to come from ourselves. It's never gonna come from an outside source and be effective and long-lasting. And so I'm, I'm willing to do that. I'm working with a couple groups now about ways that we can do that, and so, uh, sometimes I feel like I'm preachy, and I don't mean to be, but I'm passionate about this stuff because it's hard, because everything that people say is true. People are hurting financially, poverty, our kids, all of that is true, but we could either talk about it, or we could do something about it, and I'd rather, uh, do something about it. Thank you, Mr. President, for the extra moments.
Thank you for your words. Mr. Witherspoon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I appreciate if you, uh, set up a study session so we can review the Tettering Law, so I can get back to a few people on that. Uh, the other thing is, uh, Mr. Mack, I had that information for you in the morning by 10 o'clock. I have the number of policemen, uh, African-American policemen we have on duty, uh, currently. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. Mr. Evans.
Uh, I wanted to follow up on, uh, the point that, uh, Mr. Jones was making. At the last, uh, Blighted Property Review Committee meeting I attended a couple weeks ago, we talked about community development block grant funds. Now, the Community Development Block Grant Program is the major source of revenue that the city has to deal with blighted properties. And basically, what the, the funds are used for is to acquire blighted properties, to cure the blight, which in most cases is to demolish the structure, and then hopefully to be able to sell the property under repository sale or whatever to, um, a neighboring property owner or someone else who will either incorporate the property into their property they already own, or to build a new structure on the property, et cetera. The benefits of the program are to, number one, remove urban blight, thereby making the neighborhood more attractive, uh, place to live, and a more attractive place for people to make a housing investment. Uh, number two, obviously, to increase the home values of the existing owner-occupied properties in the area. And number three, to reduce crime by removing vacant properties that can be used for drug traffic and other things. The problem is that the Community Development Block Grant Program is being reduced every year, and, uh, Mr. Jones alluded to that, but just to put a fine point on it, the allocation that the, that the city had in 2011 was over $3.6 million. The allocation the city had in 2012 was about $3.3 million. The allocation that we're hoping for, for 2013 is $3 million, but we're not guaranteed that. So, you know, we see this gradual decline in this one program, and it's happening in virtually every federally and state-funded program we get. So the question is, how's the city going to transition from 40 years of having to, uh, of having the federal and state governments kinda supplement our revenues, our tax revenues from earned income tax and property tax, to a day when there are no more supplements, when we're gonna be flying on our own? And we can, we can not like that situation, but we're not gonna be able to change it, because that's the trajectory that the state and federal governments are on. Whether Republicans or Democrats are in office, it doesn't seem to matter. That's the trajectory that we're on. So we're gonna have to figure a way to deal with that, and I think Mr. Jones had a great point. We're gonna have to start to rely more on ourselves, uh, and less on government, because governments, whether we like it or not, are getting smaller and running out of money. Uh, so I, I would encourage all of us to put our thinking caps on as to how we can make this transition, how we work together as a community to deal with these issues in an environment where government money is, is drying up, uh, and it's, it's gonna be a challenge. I will look into the blighted property that was brought up by the, the young lady, and we'll see where that stands and, and whether or not we can get the enforcement actions. I must tell you that, you know, we haven't been terribly successful with some of the district justices. As, um, as Jessica and others know, uh, it's been a struggle, because some of the district justices are, are, you know, do not, do not bring actions against people who perpetually violate codes. They just don't choose to do it. And, and I don't know why they think they're doing the community a favor by doing that, but they do. So we'll, we'll circle back, and we'll do what we can on this one to try and, uh, get it, uh, declared blight and see what we can do about it. But it's gonna be a challenge going forward to deal with urban blight with the funds continually shrinking, and we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to come to grips with that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Very good points there. Follow up a little bit with that, just to say, we're, every month, we meet at our finance meetings, and, uh, we talk about what we can do to increase our city revenue without putting it on the backs of the taxpayers. And, I mean, whether it be garbage fees or city taxes or sewer rates, we do not, we're looking for other means of increasing our revenues, because, like Mr. Evans said, it's not coming from the federal government or the state government anymore. We have to start doing for ourselves, just like they're doing in the neighborhoods now. They're, they're taking that park and they're doing for themselves, looking for assistance. We're gonna have to do for ourselves with the help of the community, but please bear with us, this is not a easy process or an easy time for anybody, whether it be up, up here, upstairs, or out in the city itself. We, we have some trying times, but please, work with us. Don't fight us, 'cause we're, we're trying, believe me. Uh, like to recognize that Boy Scouts here again tonight, that Troop 59 and 96 look like a pretty good group of young men, but as well as their troop leaders, uh, I think I got an Aaron Zachroll and a Tim Ronback. You guys are the leaders that help keep these guys in line and keep them on the straight and narrow, and, there again, that's one small part of the community that could mean so much, does mean so much to the community with what you do. Keep up the good work. Uh, Merciros Rowing Team, those guys are from all over the country, not just from Erie, Pennsylvania, but here they are breaking the world's record here in our hometown for our local charities. I mean, good things happening at home by a good group of guys. Got a young man over here, uh, fifth grade, Cub Scout, altar server, singer at church, a soccer player. I mean, he's hitting all the bases and, uh, but he's serving his community, he's serving his church, he's serving his family. his church, he's serving his family. He's doing the right thing and it's a great start. Glad you could join us tonight and before you leave tonight, you get to close this meeting, okay? Mr. Kwitauski?
Well, Mr. President, I don't wanna blow your bubble today, but, uh, you know that the Controller has unique powers before the city and I have duly sworn in this young man, so I'm yielding my time. What the heck? So he's been sworn in as my deputy tonight. He gets more than five minutes. Your show.
Okay. I don't really know what to do.
Did you learn anything here tonight in your?
Yeah, I did learn a lot. I learned what the city council does, what everything, what comes to place and what, how mu- what do you do, what do you, where's the meeting at and it really helped my Cub Scout gr- it really helped my Cub Scout because I'm also doing the citizenship badge.
Attaboy.
And that's it.
Good job.
Gravity, a wonderful call.
No good word for me.
Ms. Schoff?
No, I'm not stepping in.
Laurel, you get him.
Down the drain.
Come on up.
Mr. Clem, I think we're done.
Okay. Roll call. Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Evans, Mr. Rand Kuntso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Merzke, Mr. Witherspoon.
Go ahead.
There you go.
Good job.
Oh, my. That was the best ringing of the bell we've seen in a while.
It's like ringing the sun.
That's right. It's like ringing the bell up your stage.